Since we've seen you in the spring, you're successful in the primary. What do you feel that you're doing to ready, prepare yourself for the job? Is it now more of a reality that I could be one of the 11 on this panel? And how do you take that into consideration?
Yeah, it is definitely more of a reality. I haven't focused that much, to be honest, on the campaign, to be quite clear. It really has been more so just readying myself up for the transition. It's kind of funny, whenever something happens in the county, I immediately think, well, what's going to happen next year? When the flood happened, my first instinct was, okay, this is terrible, I'm in Kingston, let's evacuate. My second thought was, what would happen next year with the charter? To figure out. Of course, there is something in there about that. So it's really been make sure, kind of preparing. There's still a lot of gaps that we're trying to fill, basically. So my campaign essentially has been just continuing my job right now in the transition, the chair. If I get in, if I get out, so be it. But there is a lot of information that new people are going to have to know, and they have to get readily up to speed. The biggest thing for anyone, this will be the learning curve, really. Even if you get in there, there's going to be a severe learning curve, we're all going to have to get over that. I mean, you know, it's just going to be an obstacle for anyone. The question will be, how quickly we get over that curve, and then can we actually get down to real business? And there's real business that needs to be done on day one. So I guess from where I stood last year, it's kind of really been going forward, just exploring more the transition, a lot more than any gritty details, if you will, from what we'll be doing with different departments, who will stand in in certain places where we'll have voids. Just kind of exploring that a little bit more. And then talking with some of the other candidates about things they might need to know for next year as well.
As the person who heads the transition committee, and all its many responsibilities, do you feel that that group is on pace with where it needs to be for a smooth transition in the fall and early next year? Or do you have concerns about particular areas?
I think we're on point. I'm always concerned about absolutely certain things, because a new challenge has just arisen. One of the challenges I did not expect for us to get that much into was state reimbursement, oddly enough, in particular the human services area. You probably know, eighty and ninety percent of most dollars for the human services are reimbursed through the state. I didn't really think that much initially when we started back in last November, 2010, that we'd be delving into that area much. And for the most part, a lot of people haven't, but it's definitely been a concern that people have come in to me with, is any of this reimbursement going to be affected, for the best part? And so what I then had to do was reach out to different counties, Lehigh, Northampton. What do you guys do? You have Home Rule there, how have you been able to approach these different types of state reimbursement billing issues? And in the end, there's a lot of different ways people can go. And so what's really going to happen is, and this isn't so much a transition, but where for whoever's doing the billing, not only in human services, that the auditing or seeking the reimbursement, they're going to have to pick up the phone, start calling some of their counterpoints in the other counties. In fact, I'd stress that for a lot of people, what they're uncertain about what's going to happen with Home Rule, from the Solicitor's Office to Judicial Records, which is just, again, the hodgepodge of all the different row offices now. Call some of the other counties, what are they doing? Because as much as we would like to, we can't implement on the transition, we cannot implement any of these, I guess, structures, basically, I'll say. It really is going to be up to the new people, in particular the county manager, as well as who's ever working with that person. So what I would suggest to all of them is, pick up the phone, they have a lot of advice. A lot of them, in particular Lehigh, has been on this for thirty years. Now, Lehigh, for county-wise comparison, they're doing quite well. At least, they certainly don't have the deficit issues that we have. But it's taken them thirty years to get where they are. There's a whole history there as well. There's a learning curve that our people here in this county can really pick up if they just choose to. So those were one of the things I didn't anticipate. Now, with other things, we're on point, good with the advertising, for the most part, the county manager is good, clerk of county council, the authorities, boards, commissions, good. We're a little behind in what vacancies there are, that's some of the information we've been requesting, we just haven't been able to sadly get any answers on that one. It's one we repeatedly request. And by that, I mean LCC, for instance, you need a nurse on that board. There is an agriculture board, I think you need a farmer, or someone who works in a farming capacity. So there's certain legal requirements of some of these boards that we just don't know. We've asked the commissioners, they've confirmed one or two, but there's some still out there that we're just not sure of. So that's why when we did this application for authorities boards, we didn't mention some of the legal requirements, we said, you know, let's just put it out there, we got to get these people and get the names in. Particularly with that commission, that was one we just added. So I was looking at the chart again the other day, it says following the initial election, so this is an election. Thirty days afterwards, the new council has to appoint immediately one person from the highest two parties of the last governor's race, so one Republican, one Democrat. They have to do that in the first thirty days. If not, it goes over to the courts. So I don't think it'd be the best start in the world for the county council to not being able to even do one of their main jobs. So we had to add that as well. So it's really just been in that. Administrative code, that's an interesting one. We've done some work with budget and finance, with policies, purchasing policy, provisions, codes, some of the policies that would go with that, we have done some work on that. I'm happy where it's at. The challenge will always still be where people will say, well, why didn't you put that in code versus a policy? And I'll say, well, the code is law, that can't change. You want to write a code that sets forth the direction when it needs to be done, but at the same time maintains flexibility with a policy for the, which county manager and his staff will come up with, his or her staff, excuse me. Sorry.
Are there major misconceptions about the transition committee? And what sort of things above you about, talked about in the public, doesn't actually reflect what's happened?
Yeah. I think there definitely are, and I knew that going in. One of the battles we would automatically lose is the PR battle. We don't have a PR spokesman, this is a group of eleven people, basically, working on a volunteer basis. We don't have someone who can just kind of speak for us and refute any claim that we hear out there. So there has been misrepresentations. I think in particular, the latest one was with interim applicants for different manager, division positions. Now, this is something we had been talking about since May, I've had conversations with how to best go about this. We knew in certain areas there would not be, there would be new roles, judicial services, administrative services, operational services, these are new roles. Now, in some of these, there's people already in the county doing certain jobs, such as human services, such as budget and finance. But there would be gaps in some areas. And some of the row offices falling out, it was assumed deputies would fill in, but we didn't want to take anything for granted, basically. We didn't want to rely on the assumption that certain people would just be there. Because what I've been hearing is, some people may retire, some people may, are exploring other professional opportunities, which is natural with any type of transition, people out there looking for other things. So we didn't want to assume that anyone would just be there. So the point of the interim applications was to just get some names for the new people, the council, manager, just in case there's openings that arise. Now, we hope, at best, we hope this list is, I guess I'll say duplicitous, unnecessary. They can throw it away, because everything will run smoothly. That's great. We're not trying to take anyone out of their current job now. That's, I think, been the biggest misconception, that we're trying to throw out the old immediately. One of the funny things when, I always remember this, from the, when we came in with the Iraq War, the first thing they did in 2003 was the divestification order. Anyone who was basically in the bath party, you're out, gone, goodbye. And what a media, and what actually was storm that ended up being formed, and they had nobody in place all of a sudden. They couldn't function, Paul Berman couldn't do his job, because they took everyone out. It was, basically, it was like having a body with no legs, no arms. And you did it, basically, out of a point to say, you're with the old, you're gone. And again, I don't ever mean it compared to something such as serious as that, but it is, we're not trying to cut off anyone in any way. We need the new people, we need the old people in charge, working, doing their jobs. But in case there's problems, we had to take a contingency plan, it was just, this is too big. It's with the deficit, with a little less, a little south than 2,000 employees, under $25 million budget, you just can't rely on certain things, you just can't assume. So that was, I think, one of the bigger misconceptions.
If elected to serve on this council, how much time do you expect to dedicate to the post?
A lot. Where it stems right now, transition work takes place between the hours of like four to seven in the morning and lunch, and then kind of anything like seven, six o'clock at night afterwards. And that's just naturally, because I have a full-time job. You have to be dedicated to that, I have two small children, you have to take part in their active life. But this will be quite encompassing in many ways, it's a part-time job, or no, it's a full-time job masquerading as a part-time job at 8,000. I think we're all, for most part, I think we're all aware of that, and it's probably one of the good things, why we've seen so many retirees come out, at the very least, I know they have time to devote to this. So I do expect quite a bit of time, especially initially upfront. I'm expecting meetings potentially daily for this new government, because they just have so many things that they have to get out of the way first. They have to get a chair, they have to get a clerk, I mean, who's going to be taking the minutes on that first day? They have to get a manager in place, or at least appoint the interim as soon as possible, just to make sure checks are signed, for the most part, that we're going to go forward, that somebody isn't sense directing traffic. Some of the things you'd look for in an interim are not necessarily what you'll need on a more permanent basis, because right now, we need someone who can hit the ground running and keep it going. So for my part, I think a lot of time is going to be put in, the phone calls, et cetera, I'm just imagining it be off the hook. And especially with new people, I'm imagining if I get on, a lot of it will be, I won't say necessarily schooling, but certainly providing information about things they might be unaware of. Which is important, because we all have to be on the same page, and I see it now, where people, if they're not on the same page, or if they have different motives, and they just want to go a different route, it's amazing how quickly one person in a group of eleven can really just sink it down. That's part of it, though, it's government, it has to run like that, everyone has a fair say. But the process can be slow, so I'm expecting a lot of time, sorry, in short.
Do you think it's appropriate for those council members to have a daily or weekly presence in the courthouse? Or do you think that there should be some other method by which county employees and the public can get a hold of them?
That's a good point. I think that, I think it can almost dangerous if we go the first way, actually. I mean, under the charter, it's quite clear, we do not take part, and it's specifically prohibited, the day-to-day operations. So if you see council people walking around there on a weekly basis, well, what are they doing there? We are not allowed to speak with those employees, again, prohibition under the charter, we are not allowed to speak to them on day-to-day activities as well. What we can speak to them is have them come to our meetings. But this council is, and one of the better things I'm really excited about is, it can focus on some longer-term problems. It is allowed to do, if you will, some type of investigations, some studies on certain things. But again, that's long-term. Prohibitions on the day-to-day, absolutely not. And the last thing you want to think is that you, than any employee there, has not only one boss and a county manager overall, they have eleven others that they have to be concerned about. I would actually be a little theory of that. Now, obviously, there's going to be some type of, hopefully, at some point, an office set up, at least where all these eleven people can go and congregate, do their business. And that's quite fine if they're there doing their stuff, but a daily or weekly presence just kind of milling around, that could be a real issue. Perception issue, importantly, that frightens me, actually.
If elected, you're serving on this body, would you vote to approve the hiring of a relative to, or the appointment of a relative to a county authority board or commission?
Yeah, I would say no at this time. I'm trying to think of a circumstance, for instance, my wife's a nurse, which she, I have no doubt she would never ever want to be involved in LCC, so I think as a general rule, I'll say no, I would not appoint any of them to me. And happily, none of them would probably want to serve on any of the authorities boards, commissions. Now, at some point, we'll get into, it's funny, we're drafting the personnel code, we made some strict laws on what a family member constitutes, it's a pretty broad definition. And we said, well, you know, you are not allowed to have anyone like that on your direct line of authority. And it was, you know, it was far definition, it was getting into stepbrothers, stepmoms, cousins, aunts, uncles, relatives, certain types of cousins removed, I don't know how far we ought to go removed, this is during county. At some point, somebody seems to know someone at some point. But what I would, tweak it a little bit, what the charter has underneath it, it says that you are not allowed to hire anyone who may have, who may work for a business that has a contract with the county? Now, that's in the charter, there's not much we can do with that. I think that might be a little broad, actually, because it's precisely perhaps that type of experience, you work with a business that may have a contract, and that contract would have nothing related, for instance, if you work on the airport board, which is, for the moment, still a board, that would have nothing to do with whether or not you work for the food and services group that delivers lunches to the correctional services. We may lose out on critical people there, critical information, but, I'm sorry, that's a different thing. But to get back to your question, no, I would not hire any relatives. Just because it's a perception thing, I think, you know, we do have to go to a little bit of a higher standard here on ourselves, and is that hard? Yes, but, you know, that's the best start we can do right now, so.
In terms of your background, your skill set, what do you think would be the most important thing that you'd be offering to this group? Is it your legal background, or some other?
Yeah. I think at this time, it would be a little more charter-centric knowledge, basically, and I think a little bit of legalities as well. Now, I'd like to say, you know, yes, I've looked at budgets and finances, yes, I've hired and fired people in the past, but there are a lot of other very, very excellent candidates out there, I think, that have a lot more experience than that, especially in running businesses. So I think that's where I would focus. In particular, along with the legalities and charter-centric knowledge, the biggest thing I would really try to bring is really cohesive group, if you will. It's going to be hard with eleven people, eleven different agendas at times, people don't want to follow the rules, I'm already worried about that. Trying to just make sure everyone at least is on the same page and ready to move on. One of the problems we see now with our, with the group at times, is you've made a decision, and some people cannot move on, they would like to continually bring this up. Even though we have rules against doing so, they will still try to bring it up, slows things down. All of a sudden, a quick meeting, it could have been half hour, it takes three to four hours, basically, and you didn't do anything whatsoever. In fact, all you did was tick other people off, which is really builds a, you know, kind of an animosity that goes forward in other meetings. So I try to really bring people together. They don't have to agree with me on most decisions, and in fact, that would not be probably the best thing. But what I'd like to know is that we're all able to make decisions, move on, and get to other business, so. Try to bring that group cohesiveness, I think that's the hardest thing for voters. You're not electing one or two, this is not like electing a state rep who goes up and makes their vote, we are not electing a congressman, you're electing a county council, and you have to factor in at some point, group dynamics. That's a hard thing to do with eleven people, but you better figure out how, because you can't have all people who just want to be the, you can't have all show horses, you can't have people who just simply want to just speak their mind, not listen in any way, nor can we have a bunch of wallflowers either, of course. We need a group concerted effort. It's hard to judge how that, but I think there's people out there with at least the twenty-eight candidates who can form this group, but for voters to try to piece that together, that's a tough part.
Do you have, do you think, particular skill set or characteristics that help you achieve that kind of thing?
Yeah, you know, it's funny, I was at a, Friday I was at a dinner for my judge I used to work for for twenty years, and she was a judge for twenty years, I was her law clerk for one year. And the main thing she always had was just a realm of objectivity, it's something I haven't ever really fact, been able to get past, even in my own practice, which probably in a terrible way, makes me a terrible attorney. I'm not as good as an advocate, because I seem to be, I won't say looking for the middle, but looking for kind of that objective center, if you will. So I think that kind of in my background has really always been where I go to. It's, I can't remember what, can't remember what CEO it was, but it's funny, he said, you know what, I'd like to see a lot more militant moderates out there in this world, because of how far we've all gone left and right. I wouldn't say I'm a moderate, but I'm certainly a man who will look to try to figure out a way to bring people together, at the best part, or at least, I guess I'll say compromise in a way, which is, again, gotten it dirty, compromise now seems to be a word that's synonymous with cowardly, instead of what it originated, which was cooperation. So that just seems to be something in my background, I don't know, I've never been, never been too unruly, nor if I ever been too outspoken, I suppose, again, just trying to formulate. I can't factor for where that came from, background, personal, parents, where it's to their credit, yes, all those things. So I guess that's something I would try to bring, and I'm not quite sure where that comes from ultimately, though.
One of the most challenging things for the group, at least we think one of the more challenging things, and one of the things the public will be most focused on, will be adopting some sort of a workable budget.
Yep.
Do you have specific ideas or suggestions where money could be saved, or on the flip side of that, are there revenues that you think the county's missing out on for one reason or another?
Yeah, I'm going to do a general disclaimer, this is one of the biggest questions as well. I mean, the way the budget is to be structured is the following, county manager will sit down with their budget and finance director, they will come up with a proposed budget, they're the people, they're, they're boots on the ground, basically, they know what they need, they know what they don't need. They'll come up with a budget, they will present that to the county council for an adoption. Now, there's a sunset provision built into that, we have, I think, two months, basically, to, it's two or four, I apologize for my memory, two to four months before we have to approve it, or it automatically goes into effect as proposed. Certain areas I would like to explore, two big ones are, number one, taking what we currently have as the defined benefit, trying to change that more to a defined contribution plan, I think the county's really lagging there. And I think that idea's been on the table from some other people in the past as well, it just hasn't been done. At some point, you really have to, because when you look at our budget, a lot of it's like seventy percent of it is salaries, we're talking people. You can't shape that budget, you can't fix this gap, which I think currently is 350 million, scheduled to be 460 once the payoff and all the penalties, et cetera, is all finished up in years to come. There's no way you can deal with that budget and get it lessened if you don't look at the salaries and personnel like that. We're not talking about laying people off, we're looking at just different structures and payment. If you adopted a plan that anyone hired from a certain point as of 2012 January will be under defined contribution. We also might have to look into early retirement plans as well, providing those type of incentives. Now, the county's done this in the past, it might be time to do it again. You need to get some younger people in there, you need to get some new blood, and also, it's another way to get defined contributions out of people as well. And I think at some point, you're going to have to look at the union versus non-union, which is just a great disparity, as opposed to who's in one and not in the other. One to three percent raises every year for the union, and none for the managers, or none for some of the other non-union employees. And it's not the problem, it's not, the problem isn't that they're getting one to three percent, the problem is that for those managers, the county's actually losing qualified people now all of a sudden. They're losing qualified people because they can't give them raises, they're losing qualified people because there's better opportunities elsewhere for them financially. That's a real problem, because you lose that, again, you lose the institutional knowledge. And without that, you have to then bring someone else in new, and you're paying them to basically, again, round that curve. You want to keep people who are good, you want to pay them accordingly, because that saves you money. I think one of the biggest things we'll see with any of the candidates is, do we understand the difference between pennywise and pound foolish, basically? Are we looking short-term? It's funny, when Walter Griffin got elected, a thousand new watchdogs turned up overnight. And that's not to say anything wrong about Walter, it's to say that a thousand new watchdogs came up overnight financially. The question is, are you a nearsighted watchdog versus one who can see far into the future? That question has not been answered. So there are things, infrastructure that we have to, some of the offices, coroner versus, my God, their deputies don't even have a computer, for God's sakes. The deputy coroner does not have a computer. When you look at them, I don't want to say it's over staffing, or it's not, because it's not in some cases, there is severe understaffing, there are people without computers, or do, they're so slow. A big way potentially to save money is also with the combination of the court versus, or no, not court, excuse me, court versus, working with the county council, the manager, particularly in court administration. I think it was just a story about clerks the other day, and the clerk of courts, they don't have enough people to cover certain areas. A lot of that can be solved if you just try to do something different with court administration, the way you schedule things, how do you schedule? If you can do certain bulks, if you can schedule certain people for certain days, if certain judges just work on a criminal basis versus working kind of all over. There are ways, there are different types of efficient processes can be worked down, and I think some of the people in the clerk of courts office have already suggested this, let's look at how we do our scheduling here. You could save a lot of money. And also, along with that, of course, as everyone knows, even though some of the employees are not getting the most outrageous benefits in the world, some are factored, if you just gave them more of a simple, more in line, I guess I'll say vacation, sick days, et cetera, if you gave them something more in line with perhaps someone in the private world, it could potentially add up to like two, two and a half people in an office, a lot, I mean, there are months, we're not talking month, we're talking months that they're going to be able to take off each year. And again, that's not to their, it's not to, you know, cast any remarks against the people there, it's just what their contracts say. I think you need to really look at that. And that's probably where we'll come in with the biggest county manager. I think we all agree, financial acumen, legal analysis, sound decision-making ability, I haven't heard anyone yet go against something so simple, but it's going to take some of the bulletproof rest to walk around, they better know that it's going to be hard, they better know that they're going to have people out to hurt, out to get them find ways. It's natural with any status quo mess, and I think that's something the new council has to know as well, that they're not there to be liked, and you probably won't be liked. If you attempt to try to be liked, you're, all you're doing is just getting in the way at some point. We're there to do the best we can, and make tough choices. I'm sorry, I went off, but that was, those are three really big areas, are there smaller areas? Yeah, absolutely. But those are really, you have to address those issues, or you're not, you're not getting at the crisis, you're just around the peripherals if you don't go with those.
What do you feel is the county's responsibility in funding outside organizations, things such as public libraries?
I think the county has an obligation. As a person who uses the, this is our county public library, I think at the moment has a few fees overdue, I do think we have an obligation, because that is still, it is a fantastic source of knowledge. Now, do we need a county library, do we need a branch in every municipality? No, probably not really. I go to one in Plymouth occasionally, which is now only open about four days a week. Are there better ways that people can, that we can maybe consolidate a little bit? I think so on that. I mean, the county library system, when it was set up, it was with the notion that people did not travel as much, I mean, travel from Nantucket Plymouth was considered far at that time. I think there's better ways we can do it, but I think the county does have an obligation. If you would like to take away that, I think that's a real concern going down. Are there better ways we can look into funding? Can we look into setting up a nonprofit? Sure, why not? When Moon Lake Park was, when PFM came in with their study in 2004 that they revised in 2009, they had two suggestions for Moon Lake Park. Number one was, turn it, get a nonprofit to run it. They said, number two, if you don't get a nonprofit, close it. Turns out, they closed it. Now, I don't know if that's because they couldn't get option one, but those were the only two options. A lot of people say, make it a for-profit, get advertising. I don't really know how feasible that is, slap a Geico sticker on a tree, it's a, you need to look at different ways. I think it's fine, I think it's great if you can look at a nonprofit who can potentially run that, I think it's fantastic. But I think the county does have an obligation to still go forward with funding on certain things. I mean, the moment you start cutting off your people's information, in particular, people use it a lot more for internet than anything, I mean, let's be real, but the moment you cut off that type of funding, that type of knowledge source, all you're doing is just taking away from the intellect of your own people.
I think four or maybe five candidates we've talked to so far have mentioned you by name, and said that they appreciate the way that you run a meeting. If elected to council, would you be interested in being the chair of that council? Or if not, what characteristics will you look for in the chair?
I think I put my name forth, some are reluctantly, only since I recognize now the time it takes, and I know the time it's going to take going forward. You spend your entire week or two between meetings thinking about, what do we need to add to the next agenda, where are the gaps, where do we need to fill certain things in, who do I need to get to do certain things? The job of a chair is not to have your opinion win the day, your job is to make sure everyone's just ready to go, and that things are being covered, which is the tough part. I think I put my name forth only in the sense that I have been doing it, that I'd be ready to do it on day one, I think there are some other people who could potentially be there as well. But I put my name forth, and if, and if put in that position, I would do it with the, with a caveat or condition to the rest of them, that they need to figure out who is going to be the vice chair, because I do not plan on doing this years on end. At this moment, I'm 31, I do not plan on seeing myself, nor is that a good form for I do not plan on seeing myself, nor is that a good form for government, to set it so up that only one person can do something. I need someone there who's ready to take this over perhaps in a year, or two, or three. It's just a big time commitment, and I don't want to see myself, I don't want to do it if I can't put the time in. So I think for now, I would put my name forth. I think it would be helpful getting people going, but it's not something I'm looking to do in the long term. I'd probably be burned down. There might be other things I'd like to try to do, so.
Because of the level of media interest in county government operations, and that will be amplified, we suppose, in the coming year, do you think there should be a way to, for the council to communicate its message to not just the Times Leader, but all the media outlets? Should there be a designated spokesperson, or should each council member?
Yeah.
Be talking to them?
Yeah, it's funny, because I was thinking about that this morning. Like, LCC has a chair, and they have somewhat of a rule that their chair will speak for everybody, but of course, that's not true. Other people are allowed to speak. I thought about doing something with that in the transition as well, but it was completely unworkable, because everyone says, you're holding back my opinions. How dare you? Don't even think about that. I think it's good if the meeting is able to go to one source to get certain information, but I think it's almost impractical to suggest that that's the way it's going to go through. These are 11 elected people. They're going to be able to speak wherever they want to. They're going to call whoever they want to. Our outreach communication, that is essential. How do we do it? Obviously, attendance at meetings, et cetera. Do we put out perhaps every month or every two months, sort of a status update, if you will, an annual report, basically, that certain boards or directors do now with their, with the, with the consent of their CEO, basically, they put forth the status of the county. Now, the county manager's already supposed to do that under the charter. I don't think there's anything wrong with us doing something similar as well that doesn't conflict, or perhaps combining to not overlap in any way. So I'm not realistic to think there can only be one central source. I think it's a good idea, but I'm almost positive such rules, but forth, it would get voted down, and everyone would say, no, I can speak to whoever I want, so. I'm just hoping that some people have a bit of moderation, I guess, I suppose, when they consider how they want to put themselves out there for certain comments. I don't know everyone's personal agenda. I don't know what they see in their future, but I just hope they consider the integrity of the county council, be able to speak with one unified voice, however unrealistic that may be.
Questions from the group?
You mentioned you're campaigning by doing, by doing transition. Are you campaigning at all?
I am, yeah. That's not to say, I do try to attend functions where possible. I have, I've gone in with somebody on signs. It turns out, signs are about $700, so somebody said, if we split, it's $350. I said, great. So we put signs up. You try to attend the functions where you can. I have not been able to hit all of them. For instance, there was, there was a meeting last, pardon me, the legal voters, voters had something on Wednesday, and it started at 7:00. We had a meeting at 6:30 in the transition team. I was, I was late by about an hour, because I obviously had to go to the transition meeting, which went smoothly. There were only about three people there. There were six people in the transition team there, and then there were about three people in the audience, who I assume just forgot there was a legal voters meeting that night. But I think the tough part with me campaigning is if I don't do my duty now, if I don't give it the time and the focus that it deserves now, I don't really frankly deserve to be elected. Now, whether people recognize the effort I have put in on this, it really is irrelevant. I would recognize it. I would know it, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be helpful, and nor would I have, frankly, I'd lose respect for myself going forward. So I have been able to campaign. Yes, we have some signs. It's been door-to-door. No, not really. There just hasn't been that type of time for that. Try to go to an event where possible, so.
How much money have you raised?
Let's see here.
May I ask how much money you expect to spend?
Yeah, that's a good question. And that has directly almost to do with how much I've raised. Let's see, I think I was given about $400, $100 from a family friend, and I was given about $300 from an aunt, so I have about $400. In the primary, I think I spent less than $300. I think there was about some door knockers we did, and then some cards, which kind of worked out to about $250, $260. There's a website, I think, that cost me about $12 a month. For this go-around, I think I'm a little bit closer to $350. I know it's at least $350, because I said on signs, but I think it's around $400. I find myself reusing cards from the primary, which have the incorrect ballot number on them. But nonetheless, there are so many of them that, just trying to get out where we can, so. Being 31, having two small kids, I just simply don't have the ability to tell my wife that this is where we're going to throw our money right now for an $8,000 job. But, you know, a lot of it's still just meeting people for the most part. That, yeah, that's free capital, if you will, so I've been able to exercise that. So not much, overall.
Do you feel you have a base of support? Did it come down to geography in the springtime?
Yeah, that's.
How do people know your name and know the full delivery for you?
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out myself. I really, I couldn't figure it out. I mean, I know, there were probably people read the newspaper and said, well, I see this guy, his name a lot, maybe he knows what's going on. As far as a contingent basis, not really. I'm from Plains originally. I seem to do okay in Plains, but so did other people living in Plains. I spent a lot of time in Wokes Bear growing up in high schools. I did not seem to do very well there, though, compared to other candidates. I seemed to do well in Dallas and Back Mountain, which I never visited, and I'd only possibly contribute that to the fact that people didn't realize Karen Boebel spelled an A and I'm spelled with an E, and maybe they had confusion. Now, if that worked to my, if that worked to my credit, great, because I was like, I didn't campaigned at all in Dallas or Back Mountain. I would like to think perhaps there are very informed voters out there, but perhaps there was a mistake, and they just, they didn't know. So I don't know how it all worked out. I really am not sure. I said so-so in Hazelton, but not any really better or worse than anyone else for the most part.
Did you have concerns in the spring? Do you have concerns now about the way that candidates are conducting the campaign, anything that you felt was irregular or improper?
There are a few things. I do have considered great concerns for, number one is, this is a job interview, and I think a lot of us just simply have not read the job description itself, what we can and can't do. When I hear people talking about, we need to clean our air, we need to make sure that our water is pure, we need to, you know, really have different investigations of how the budget is done, I just, I cringe a little bit, only in the sense that I just like to read what our, our main essential duties are. And it's not to limit us, but there's some major things that we have already there. I just don't think we're ready for the job description. Have people been contact, I know hearsay rumors? Have I heard people contact different county employees, et cetera, different promises about different authorities, boards, commissions? Absolutely. I've definitely heard that type of hearsay. I can't prove it, however. I don't know if it's out there, nor am I going to. I'm not, you know, I don't know what people are saying out there. On the campaign, do I have a problem with people grouping together? Not really. The working families, the fact that the four of them are running together, I think that's great. They're just trying to get themselves elected. They have that ability to do so. They have a shared platform that they have to obviously all work with, but I don't have a problem with people doing that. I have concerns with certain people in the courthouse promoting certain candidates over certain ones, a faction, if you will, because obviously with the charter, there has been a revision with people's, certain people's roles and abilities are. And where there are gray areas, I've already seen it, that candidates are looking to fill those gray areas in with things I don't think in any way are implied in the charter or even, or even allowed for. I do have great concerns about that, a group of three to four trying to continually revise certain people's roles. Now, they know they can't change the form of government, but they sure do will their best to undermine it, or at the very least, try to fill certain things in for other people. I do have concerns about that, and I know that's actively happening, because I see my email inbox from these candidates, and I know where those questions are coming from deep down.